Everybody called me to order at 4:00 P. M. Does anybody have any disclosure of interest this afternoon? No disclosure of interest, thank you very much. Okay, today's meeting is a special meeting of council to discuss and interview candidates for the vacant seat of council and the individual represented individually as they'll have an opportunity for go to half an hour each. So the first up is counsel Terry Fox. We're gonna invite Terry Fox in, Mr. Scorchinsky, please.
Tough not to address it that way.
Yeah. Little C.
Hey, Terry.
Hello.
How you doing?
Terry. How's everybody today?
Good, welcome.
Hi, Terry, how you doing? Just great, great yourself? Good, thank you. So we've set up a process of seven questions. We may be able to answer those each individual member of council is gonna ask a question. But we want to start off with your opportunity to speak to us and just a kind of presentation of notes, what you feel that you could bring to us. Could be kind of five, 10 minutes overview of what the reason why you put your name forward to be a member of this council for next two years.
Well, as some of you are aware, I've gone through this process on the other side of the table three times. And sometimes the the choices out there are a little questionable. And I felt that I would throw my name forward because people here do know that I don't have an agenda on mind. And I also want to point out that right now I have no intention of rerunning again. So if there is a younger person that does want to rerun, hey, so be it. And that certainly won't break my heart if I don't, but if I don't receive the position. But everybody knows, I believe, my position with the in the town was 13 years with TD Bank here, 35 in total. My devotion to the town has always been there. Even after I stepped down from council, I still supported council in their decisions. Having gone through many decisions over the years, I know what background work you guys have put into it. And I'm fully confident that that those discussions and decisions were not made lightly all the way along. Other than that, that's that's about it.
Right on. Well, move on to councillor, councillor Lake's gonna ask you the next question, please.
Sure. So the question reads, what is your understanding of the role and responsibilities of council for the Town Marathon? And then second part of that question is what skills, interests, personal qualities do you possess that makes you a good candidate for the vacant council position?
Okay, the role is to operate as a team, offer your opinions and 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 thought process on what comes forward, address it to council, voice your opinion. I also fully believe that you, if you, it comes to a vote and I vote against it, it's defeated or I'm sorry, it passes. Then move on tomorrow is another day, it's no big deal. I voiced my opinion, give my reasons for it and then move on. Full believer that we've got to be a team. Any dissension in the ranks is should not be, put it that way. And the second one qualifications.
The skills, interests and personal qualities that you possess that you you think would make you a good fit.
Personality. I'm well known in the community. People do know that I will listen and and usually come up with an answer, sometimes I'll walk away and say I'll get back to them because sometimes it making a quick decision is not in anyone's best interest, so. That fairly well covered, right?
Yeah, that's good.
Good. You good with that question? So up next we have councillor Metos, that's one of our student councillors and she's gonna ask a question as well.
Tell us about our community and the challenges we face.
Well, going back to 1993 when I came, the challenges are pretty small, but the current challenges are two big ones, one, funding for the Active Living Centre. I know there's not much that can be done, I do know that the lobbying prior experience that has gone on and I'm sure the government has heard from you, from from Rick and any councillors that were there. That we knew what funding, the second part, and there's not much that council can do with that, it's already been done pretty well. Continued support of the proposed mine. So we still have good activity with the existing mine and I haven't heard the latest report, but I'm assuming that'll carry on. When they extend it to the 15 years, what do we got, about six or seven left? And I'm assuming that they'll probably carry it on again in five year multiples, but. I understand that we do have infrastructure that has to be updated at particular points. But I'm also a believer that we want government funding to be on board for that type of thing. I'm not aware of any resistance out there right now to any particular item. You might have ideas, but right now I don't have anything on resistance to council.
Good, thank you. Up next we have councillor Wheeler, please. Well, actually, no, sorry, councillor Anthony.
Hey, Terry. My question is, what do you think about what makes Marathon a great place to live, work and play?
What comes to your mind? Go back to 1993 when Human Resources contacted me and they said, where the hell is Marathon? But anyways, I came up here. We were here maybe two or three weeks and I said to my wife at that time, I said, this town is actually, well, maybe you know, it's a small village in southern Ontario in the 60s. Rely on neighbors, neighbors looked after you, people were interested in what you were doing. And and you know what, that is fairly well continued on until 2024. We have good neighborhoods in town, some have a little bit of a reputation, but for the most part, we have great reputation or great neighborhoods in the town. The town is in sound financial position to my knowledge. I I guess that's wow, I shouldn't say that, it's a great place to raise a family. And that's sort of evident that both my kids left and then moved back at a later date. They got to see that the grass wasn't any greener out there. And of course dad sort of promoted that all the way along too, so. I guess that's it. I guess it goes on beyond that. My involvement with the hospital and and of course, the recruitment of docs going from one doc and almost closing the hospital doors to what we have today. Very proud of that. I didn't have anything to do with the new expansion right now. But it's it's progressing to what the community needs and I'm fully in support of that. Prior experience, I did have two agendas that wouldn't come yet. Two things I wanted to accomplish in my prior council and that was landfill. We did not have a landfill when I came. And second of all was the senior assisted living of some sort. Now, the way it worked out, it's probably better than than what I originally wanted, but that's the whole part of teamwork is coming up with a solution. And it's a great solution that we have. This answers that.
Have you got your name on the list yet?
Name on which list was that?
For a matter.
Sorry, I didn't hear. Oh, for the matter, no.
Because the list is growing.
No, that that's okay, I'm hoping one of my kids builds a bigger home and.
Thank you for that.
With the grand suite.
Councillor, councillor Wheeler, please.
For our next question, Marathon has some potentially exciting developments in the works. Wow, what is your understanding of these developments?
The Active Living Centre. My understanding from all the drawings and what I have seen extremely excited. I am also holding the merit to what his commitment was to the seniors on funding from the government. And that's 90% of it coming from the government and I'm totally outside with the 10% from the town. Other exciting news, I'd sure love to see those final two or three approvals come through for our new mine. And then of course, funding following that to get that thing up and running. I'm not really aware of anything other exciting than that, other than, I guess, your high school, well, not so much public school, but high school is doing quite well in sports. A great year last year, hopefully it follows up with it again this year.
Awesome, thank you.
Great, thanks for that. Let me ask you a councillor Brown's, please.
All right, what prompted you to put forward your application at this point?
I think I sort of answered that, but I didn't want to see the town yet not have a choice, put it that way. You I've gone through the process of people with an agenda wanting to sit on council and I did not want to see that. Like I said, I've always promoted, went outside of council. And I certainly did not want to see council having a difficult time making a decision. I don't know, I know two or three of the names put forward, but I don't know the others. So maybe there's some young people that that want the position and and can do a fine job. And if council wants somebody with experience, I come with that.
Well, thank you for that response. Our last question is simply this is, so what do you have any questions of us? I mean, obviously that if there's anything that you have understanding of and you don't have an understanding of, you can ask us and anything in the process that you're not sure of or aware of, you can ask us. So any questions that you might have of us?
Not in particularly, what's remuneration now? I think I left it with 10.
That is a good question. I'd actually have to look at the policy.
About $13,000 right now.
Is it?
Yeah. And the daily stipend is up a little bit, just to cover off the cost of living.
Now, it doesn't really matter if you're rerunning again, I wouldn't ask that question, but our two new councillors that that we do have, are you happy with the your positions?
Yeah, I would say so in my opinion, yeah. I've been here pre pandemic, so I feel like I got kind of a baptismal fire when I came to the pandemic with municipal politics. Was I ever expecting life to turn upside down the way it did? And the fact that we navigated it as a council so well, yeah, I'm, it's taught me a lot, put it that way, so yes.
Do we do any meetings still on Skype or whatever? We still live?
Yeah, so with the new laws changing after the COVID allows you to travel and be away. And I have taken part in meetings from different countries and it's worked very fine. And he was a council opportunity not to be stuck at council, he gets done in his car. It just, those are, it makes it work much easier for council to have a corner to have our meetings. So yeah, that's a very good tool, absolutely.
I like that, it's something that we advocated a long time ago. And it's unfortunate that we had to go through a pandemic to to get it implemented, but so be it, it's in place now.
It's a great tool, yes.
I don't think I have any other questions at all.
Well, Terry, I really appreciate you putting your name forward, obviously you know the process and you identified a lot of it in your comments about how we have many candidates, that's great. We'll be doing an interview for all those individuals and after the individual is done, we will counsel deliver a lot of comments and responsibility received from all the candidates. And we'll make a decision and that will be brought forward, the candidate will be identified and will be made in the public on the 18th of December, a council meeting.
16th.
16th, sorry.
Well, the announcement won't come until that the individual will be informed.
Okay. After the council, but the announcement to the public will be identified in the council meeting.
That's fine.
And then that individual will start the new year. Okay. We done? Awesome. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, good night. Have a great evening. Our next candidate is here, I'll try.
It is, right? Absolutely. You guys are all good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I confirm?
No, I don't think I've ever run out of.
I've seen one, that's the only place I've seen you, so.
Oh, we're
That's fine, just you can, just the three minutes, so I have a minute, I just seen this, it's the same.
We're right in the center seat, which we should be.
Hello, everyone. Send right back, right back.
Good evening, Shane.
Good evening, everyone.
How you doing?
Thank you very much for having me.
No, thank you for coming and thank you for putting your name forward. Pretty simple forward process where you're gonna allow everybody at council to ask you a question. Give you an opportunity to kind of give us a little bit of highlight and some information about you personally and, you know, what you do and maybe just more general, who's Shane? And and we can go from there and then we'll get into the questions, there's about five or six questions overall, but just give you an opportunity to let us know who you are.
Okay, then. Originally, I'm a Pickmore boy, grew up in Pickmore. Went to elementary school there, day school, left to go to Thunder Bay for high school and college. Lived extensively around the region, trades person by trade. I was a union rep for Launa, national rep. Fell into business development, which I currently do now for Chimanawashidlin. Guess I'm rather good at it. Although tune in my own horn. It's basically why I've been very eclectic in my career. So when people ask me, tell me about yourself, where do I start? So what I do now, like I said, business development, I have a passion for expanding our region. The amount of growth that our region has for the potential in mining, hydrogen development and power projects and everything else is really exciting. But we need to make sure that we're giving our our towns the tools to be better equipped with all of this. Our region faces a population deficit of about 20,000 people, the workers. And you may have noticed some of these mines and industry and retail and restaurants seem to be closing because we just don't have the population locally. Personally, I enjoy the camp based projects because you don't have that daily commute back and forth and there's a lot of money in your pocket. However, it doesn't do anything good for the local tax base. People aren't moving to the region with their families the way they did back when Manitowage and Marathon were first created. Industry doesn't provide housing anymore. So that's why you're seeing a real population deficit. And we look at Heart Gold and Pure Gold, how those two brand new mines collapsed because they couldn't be cost effective. It is a real result of not having the the local infrastructure in place. And then if we expect people to move to the region, we also need to offer supports for young families, working families. You know, we need to have childcare available for shift workers. Being a single parent, not myself, but having a daughter, that is, that's very important for our young people to have childcare for people or for for their children. So there's affordable housing that people want to live in. And I know some communities and including ours, our own, they're looking at tiny homes and that. But however, a tiny home doesn't feel like a home, it's just a transitional home. So we need to be flexible in some of the way we approach housing.
So Shane, can I stop you right there? I just want to cut you off, I want to keep that thought, but in some of the questions or some of those things we're looking for, and those are some of the answers, we might want to get through those questions.
Okay.
The first one, just kind of tell us a bit about you and I don't want to take the thunder away from your opportunity to answer those other questions, so that's okay with you?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, appreciate that, thanks. So up next, we're gonna have councillor Lake to ask the next question.
Yeah, and I do apologize because I'll ask you a question and I feel like I'm writing while you're talking, it's just, we're taking notes because we have a few things, I'm not trying to be rude. Trying to listen and capture, so the first question on the interview is, what's your understanding of the role and responsibilities of council for the Town Marathon? And then the second part would be what skills, interests or personal qualities do you possess that that you think would make you a good candidate for that position?
So the role of being a politician or a town councillor is to think long term for our community and what's best for our community without having personal influences involved. You want to be holistic in your approach as as to what's going around, going on around us, making sure that we're spearheading the future growth of our community. We live in a very beautiful community. I know I often post about Marathon, when I'm sitting at Pebble Beach having my coffee and that. I often tell people, we live in one of the most beautiful areas in northwest Ontario, we're a beautiful coastal community. And I feel very blessed about that. So I speak highly of Marathon and I like to promote Marathon and how we have a great healthcare system and the schools and our low crime rate and our abundance of employment. That's very important for a town councillor to do. Be a real ambassador to the region, the country and in our travels. And it's by being a good ambassador that you get people thinking about moving to the Town Marathon, investing in the Town Marathon.
Thank you, thanks, Mark.
Great, thanks, appreciate it, Shane. Up next we have councillor Metos.
Tell us about our community and the challenges we face.
Okay. Like I said, I grew up in Pickmore in the 80s and 90s and I've seen its evolution, I remember back when there was the day down where the old police station was and including the old clinic, which was a white building until the other clinic was built. I've seen the boom and bust cycles of the region and there's been real challenges there. I've seen this community face a huge exodus when people thought this town was dying. And fortunately for us, we moved here during that time. It was a real blessing in disguise, this movement here. And I see its growth and I see that resurgence in our town, how there's a lot of pride in our town. I love seeing that, my town pride.
Great, thanks for that. Up next we have councillor Anthony, please.
Hello, my question is, when you think about what makes Marathon a great place to live, work and play, what comes to your mind?
Beautiful Lake Superior and its crystal clear waters or endless beaches, I feel like they're private beaches. Full disclosure, I work in Thunder Bay during the weekend, when I come back home on the weekends and I hop on my four wheeler or I go in my vehicles. I go to either Pebble Beach or Carving Cove or the Marina. They're virtually deserted, so it's very serene and peaceful and tranquil. However, I am a chatterbox and I like just talking with people, so it'd be nice if there's more people there enjoying the same things, but I understand people go away to camp. This is my camp.
Great, thanks councillor Wheeler.
Marathon has some potentially exciting developments in the works, what is your understanding of these developments?
Well, there's a deep water port, we explored that back when I was with White Lake Limited Partnership. We were looking at possibly redeveloping that port alongside with Bitagon in the Town Marathon. There's a potential of generation mining, which has a huge potential there, it has the support of Bitagon as well. And some of the some of the camps that were still left in place and Bitagon has created the laundry facility in the hopes of securing those contracts. There's also the sub develop, subdivision developments happening. Recently, there's been two apartment complexes completed. There's also the community rec center that's gonna be down by the waterfront.
Awesome.
And I believe in the region, they're also gonna be looking at a two plus one highway pilot project for this region as well. Just because it's a lot more cost effective than actual tuning up the highways.
Yeah. Awesome, thank you.
Thanks for that, Shane. I'll put councillor Brown's, please.
Sorry, Shane, what prompted you to put forward your application at this point?
As I mentioned before, I love living in Marathon. I've been a leader in my professional life as a union member as well as in my current roles and previous roles in management. I have a holistic approach to my thoughts, I have a vast network, both politically and professionally in the region and across Canada. So I thought, oh, maybe I could bring these assets and assist our beautiful town grow.
Don't mind, I'm just trying to write down. By all means, if you felt that when I cut you off, I was a caller, I just wanted to make sure you were prepared for questions. If you have some data, any one of those questions, by all means, you've got time, so you go right ahead to as well if you want, but if you're good, that's good as well.
Yeah, I'm good there. Yeah, like I said, I have a lot of political connections, both nationally and federally and provincially. That's the benefits of being a union rep representing 114,000 working families.
Good. Well, thank you for answering those questions. My last one for you is simply, do you have any questions of council in regards to anything that you might think we've missed or you want to ask us?
One we need, we need once a month, twice a month, how does that work?
Two times a month.
Two times a month.
And it varies in this time of year, you'll be maybe some special meetings with council, depending on budget, budget process going into January, February, March, we get the budget process, but two times a month is the standard. One time in the summer, July and August. So the commitment is there and depending on your external boards, if you want to sit on some of the boards that council represents, there's various meetings through those boards.
Okay, then. I do travel a lot for work, right across Canada, as some of you may have noticed on social media. So if I'm unable to attend, thankfully nowadays we have Teams and Zoom, which allows us to participate virtually. Thankfully, with my role of Chimanawashidlin, I do have flexibility from working from home, which I did today, attend today's meeting.
Yeah, the the rule, one change of the COVID pandemic allowed us to go virtual, which is a really good tool, so that you could, you know, we obviously want to be in person as much as possible we can, but if it's not possible, there is opportunities to get into the meeting and be fully participating in the meeting and have the opportunity to vote on issues virtually. Whereas in the past, before COVID, you had that opportunity, you had to be in person at the meeting, so it's a good tool.
Yeah, it definitely is, but there is no replacement for in person.
No, absolutely.
This way you can read people's body languages. And I think it was about a month ago, I was sitting in a boardroom, I never thought I'd be sitting, and I was over at the TSX discussing economics. I was thinking, all the times I watch Suits, I never meet this office or this boardroom. I thought that was pretty cool.
That's fine.
So do you have any other questions to council?
No, I have no further questions, that was just my one question.
Sure. So we will, we will interview all the candidates tonight, we will debate after the candidates have been all their information and we should, we'll, you know, communicate with each other and feel which one's the best one. to see which one's the best one to represent municipality and city council. Then we will notify the individuals successful after that and then we will make a public announcement on our council meeting on December 16th. Who that individual will be and then we will, that individual will serve in January 2025.
Okay, then. Cheer me up, everyone.
I appreciate that. Yeah, thanks for the interest.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for coming, Shane.
Good night.
Just given my previous occupation, I said worship, that sounds like.
That's awesome. So as you know, we have, we have six candidates for this position. We're trying to interview everybody equally for thinking about time that they need to present their their argument to this council and why they'd like to be here. So right off the bat, I will ask you the question individually, council members will have an individual opportunity to ask those questions. So I just want you to tell us a little bit about yourself and the preamble of the starting off to the process.
Okay, I'm going to be really brief on on that part because and if there's time at the end, I can always use it up. But I'm more interested in your questions and, you know, what what you need to know from me to make a good decision. So I, what would I tell you? I've been in Marathon 37 years, came for three years and stayed and have been pretty active in the community in various capacities from supporting things at the medical family health team to the forest management to, most recently, the community collective at Marantz Food Bank, Thrift Store and the community garden and the Christmas hamper program. And pleased to say that after many years involved in that, we've got a really great chair that I'm mentoring and is picking up the ball. And that's why I have space right now to be considered for this role. Stop there and I can fill things in later if we need to.
Awesome. That's great. Thank you. And right off the bat, let's start off with councillor Lake.
Yep. So we're, we're just going to ask the question and then write down. So it's not that we're not listening, we're, we're going. But the first question is, what's your understanding of the role and responsibility of a councillor for the Town of Marathon? And then the second part would be what skills, interests and personal qualities do you possess that makes you a good candidate for that position?
Okay, first part, what's the role? Probably the best way I can think to say it is the council is like a, is watching from the balcony and and relates to the undertakings of the town staff and employees through through the CIO. Listens to the wider community as those things are developed and takes care to develop those things. But but isn't involved in the day to day operations of the town. Skills and opportunities. I guess the one thing I want to say about that, the role of the council, it's a little bit different coming in halfway through. Because this is a train that's halfway where it's going. And I think, you know, in a new council, you get together and you come up with your strategic plan and those kind of things. I think the person who comes into this role is going to need to be able to comfortably work with the strategic plan as it exists and to support, support those goals. And I had a, you know, spent a little bit of time with it before I got here over the last few days. You know, really interested to see where we're at on those kinds of things if we go ahead. Skills I bring to it, I do have a lot of governance experience. Probably the biggest one is I chaired a general council executive of the United Church of Canada, which is a 63 member council. And let me tell you, it's, it's challenging, but operated under Robert's rules and familiar with those kinds of things. I understand very well conflict of interest. I've also got a background in conflict resolution. Boards I've served on in Marathon, I was going to, I was on the Wilson Memorial Hospital Board until Pearl started working in this hospital and then I couldn't be on it anymore. Library Board, I'm the chair still of the Marathon Sick Children's Fund. And I mentioned the forest management and the executive for the community collective. All the places that I have, you work with different, different kinds of patterns because most of the people are volunteers in those situations, in a lot of them. But I don't see, I've always approached it as it doesn't matter if you're volunteer paid, you've made a commitment and, and you know, have an expectation we're going to follow through on, on our goals for those, for those groups. So my, and that's locally, I have also been involved in governance nationally and internationally in various organizations.
Great. Thanks for that. Councillor Mateos, please.
Tell us about our community and the challenges we face.
Oh, obviously, I really like it here. So I'm working on the challenges. Well, I mean, I think, I think like a lot of small towns, there's, there's some issues. The ones that I, the one that I most immediately relate to is volunteerism. And I, and I have to say, I feel like I've been fairly successful. We have a large people working with the community collective and that's been, been a challenge. But we, you know, if I, there's times I post on Marathon bulletin board on Facebook that we need a spot filled on that. And I guarantee within half an hour, I have to take it down because people want to be involved and they want to get involved. So that's a good thing. I think some of the challenges is that, is a cultural challenge in that Marathon developed as a resource industry town. And obviously, we wouldn't be here, we didn't have the money and the resources created by being a resource industry town. But I think, I think that they're, we're moving in a direction that if we want to be sustainable, if we want to continue to do, I mean, to be a well-rounded, healthy community, we need to, we need to look more at things that continue as well as this, you know, the resource industry that, you know, we rely on. We, if we didn't have that, we wouldn't be here. But it was a real shock when the milk closed. And what was shocking to me is it seemed like that was the reason we existed. And it went down and it was only here for 60 years, which is not a long time in the big picture. And it made me realize that if we want to be here 200 years from now, it's a bit different picture. And then in the strategic plan, a couple of things that I see that are developing that making room for entrepreneurialship. The, the commitment to development of the, of the bay and in partnership with Big Gung. And but I smile because I have, I love that corner out there at the highway and I have all kinds of ideas. We need a booth out there, that's what we need. Because they got Whitney the Pooh and Wawa and they got the goose. I mean, Whitney the Pooh and right wherever they have the goose and Wawa. Where are you going to stop and get your picture? And then read the sign that says, take another three farmers down the hill and see what's there. I, I just see so much potential here that probably if I said that there was a challenge, it's the underdevelopment of potential that we have here in this community. And maybe stop there, but I, I think that there's, there's a lot, lot that could happen. Some of it is under the council's authority and some of it's not, and I recognize the difference.
Great. Thanks for that. Excuse me. Councillor Anthony, please.
All right. So my question is, what do you think about what makes Marathon a great place to live, work and play? Will you, what comes to mind for me?
Oh, those are easy. For me, it's the outdoors. Last year was a bad winter because we didn't have snow and I normally go cross country skiing five days a week or on the lakeshore. I like the simplicity of life here. I walk most of the places I go and I couldn't do that in a larger place. I grew up in, in the US, in Southern Ontario, in large cities. And our church, their model at that time was they put you somewhere, kind of match made you. And I got sent here and you have to stay for three years. And I just, I blew my mind that there was towns like this and my kids could feel safe in the community. You know, had a good sense of knowing one another and watching out for each other and those kinds of things. And I also think we have an incredibly good economy here in terms of the standard of living. People make money. It is a hard town to report because, because of that high standard of living, if you don't have it, it, the division feels really hard. But yeah, I think those are the kinds of things that make it a great place to live. I mean, I have a, I have a camp that I could ride my bike to, you know, like, I mean, like I, I grew up in a place where you had to go eight hours to Muskoka. Talked about how you're way up north. I thought I was practically at James Bay, but anyway. Yeah. So those are some of the things that, you know, are the reasons that I, I've stayed in town.
Great. Thanks for that councillor Wheeler, please.
Marathon has some potentially exciting developments in the works. What is your understanding of these developments?
Well, I assume we're talking about the mine as one of the things. And, and my understanding is, is that it'd be nice to get it going. I certainly support that, that, that work. I also support, I was glad to see that there was a community benefit thing being looked into because I think that it will demand a lot of the town and there should be some, some value from that for us. And I also think that we want to do it in the most environmental way and in the way that is respectful of the indigenous people. My understanding is that we exist on unseen territory. And so however that plays out with the government, we'll, we'll need to be able to work with that and, and recognize that in however that mine gets developed. So I think that's probably the biggest development. And, but I think there's potential for lots of other things, you know, just, just services. And, and we're a family health team again is just on that. We have had a really, I think, an easier time recruiting for a long time because it was so well staffed and people had a balance of life. Right now, we're seeing some shrinkage in, in the staff there and we need to make sure they really stay on top of that retention and recruitment. And I, that's one of the strategic goals.
Great. Thanks for that councillor Brown.
All right. What prompted you to put forward your application at this point?
Two things. I've always been interested, so it's free. I've always been interested in working council. But as I said, I, I'm stepping back from my role as the chair of the community collective and that opened up. And it was at the exact same time that the invitation went out to offer to, to see if there's a fit here. And the other is, is that I'm, I'm a constant learner and this seemed like a really great opportunity to learn more about how this operates. I mean, it's probably the most formal part of the organs and organizations in town about how decisions are made and that kind of thing. And so to be honest, the fact that it was only two years made it easier to say, yeah, I, I could, I could do that and learn from it and, and make a good decision about, you know, in two years from now, do I want to run? And yeah, so those were the, those were the two reasons that at this point it felt like a good idea.
So I'm going to finish up on this and see if somebody else you might have. And I think, so the last question is basically simply, do you have any other further questions or comments that you want to ask us? And maybe you want to share? As a council, as a collective.
Yeah, yeah. But I think of a lot of questions, but I think a lot of them are technical and probably not for, for here. I, I, the one I want to ask is, do you like each other? Do you get along? Because, you know, to me, I've been in a lot of governance situations where that's probably the most important thing, that people get along, that, that they, even if there's significant disagreement about something, there's a respect that goes out of the room. And I don't know how it is on councils, but I see it in politics all the time where that we argue and then we go have a beer, world has, has shrinking. And I don't really want to be part of that. I was asked to run for the, one of the federal parties in the upcoming election. And that was a big part of why I said, no, like I just want to fight with people all the time. So, but you're all here together, so you have to lie even if you don't. So I won't ask, do you get along?
Well, I don't, I think that's a fair question and I don't think we lie to you.
No, I'm just kidding.
Really gets longer than that. I think from my experience, our councils, we've always gotten along. We've always had the opportunity to disagree, to agree. You're right. When we leave the room, we should be all go have a coffee or a beer and talk about what we discussed or not and still be a team. And I think, I know councillor Lake and myself sat together for a lot of years, 18 plus. Councillor Wheeler's new, councillor Brown's six plus years. There's always been a great team atmosphere. So again, we respect each other's opinions and each other's opportunities, what they bring to the table and their varying lives, their values, because each one of us might have different values. And like the reality is when we come to the table, we are a good team. And I don't think I'm talking out of the turn.
You're right.
We represent different industries, different generations and different political parties. And yet we all still come together as a collective and I don't think we've ever, ever had a disagreement really. So difference of opinions, but no disagreements, so.
I do think you're right. That is a pretty important element in politics.
And it's funny because I was just talking to councillor before we started the new events coming back. And that's exactly one of the biggest things on the agenda right now is about the, the, this disregard of the respect of each other on the council table. And then it becomes very negative and not productive. And then the outside world takes it and becomes even bigger and worse in that regard, right? So yeah, it's a really good tool to have a counter that gets along. And by that, having our youth at the table has really given them the opportunity to be guided through this process and take that on to their future lives, whoever that might be. So yeah, we've, we've been pretty good.
Then I'm aware of two councils that actually stopped operating this year because they couldn't get along. So that's where that question comes from. I haven't got the impression that's going.
No, it's good.
You'll be okay.
And, and that's probably one of the things I would add is that I do like working as part of a team. I enjoy that a lot and I like diversity. I like difference. And, and I, like I, many of the organizations I've been involved in operate on consensus. Not, not just, you know, 50% majority or two thirds majority depending on the decision, but on, we all, we all agree. And I have to say that it challenges us a bit more, but it also means that, that I think of one situation where there was six people on this board and we were all in consensus and one person says, you know, can't do this. And they started talking about why and, and you could hear originally, everyone's like, yeah, it was like that kind of feeling we got. By the end of about 20 more minutes of conversation, everyone in the room who would have agreed to one thing was persuaded to agree to something else. So I really, I really value that single voice sometimes where they, they kind of can persuade others. And, and in this situation, it's simpler because you do eventually have a vote. And when you walk out of the room, you support all the decisions that are made by council, whether, whether it was the one you were advocating or not. And I, I think it's really important that, you know, you don't go to the community app and say, well, I was against it. But everyone else, you know, bullied me into it or whatever, you know, like that's not, that's not how we support the working council, so.
Very much so. And that's what this council, and I think all the councils in the past have operated, so that's a really good tool. Makes it nice to come and sit together in a room as well, because you like each other. Not because you have to be here, because you like to be with each other and, and bring the values of the community and things forward. If you have anything else, that's, that's.
Just the one other thing is to, to repeat that I, I recognize that I'm getting on a train that's moving forward and I don't come with a particular agenda, you know, of something I want to see get done. But to support the fulfillment of that strategic plan by asking curious questions, certainly by, you know, understanding it well and maybe bringing a perspective to it that we haven't thought of yet. But it's not like, like when you're starting a council where you're trying to advocate for that plan. But it's not like like when you're starting a council where you're trying to advocate for that plan to reflect a certain eye.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time. And we will be going through the process individually. We have three more candidates. We'll be asking the same questions. We'll make a note and then we'll deliberate after that. And then that candidate will be notified as a successful candidate. Then we'll bring it to a public meeting on December sixteenth. And that individual who's selected will start on January twenty.
Great. Well, I I wish you luck in finding the right.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thanks.
Have a good night. So thanks and welcome. And the process is pretty straightforward. We're going to ask you some questions. And we're going to go through those. Everybody's going to have an opportunity to answer those questions, but we want you to feel comfortable and if something pops up, you got the time to come back to it. You can come back to it by all means, but it pops in your head, sure. So we want to start by saying welcome and thank you. And also tell us a bit about you and Cody.
Sure. So hi, everyone. Thank you for considering me as a municipal councillor for the municipality of the town of Marathon. As a candidate, I just thought I would speak a little bit about myself first for anybody who doesn't know me. My name is Cody McLeahan, and I have owned a home in Marathon for just over three years now. I have a healthcare and human services background and am currently employed at Confederation College's North Shore campus. It's a job that I love and getting to witness the great strides our students make, as well as being a strong advocate for them and their academic success is the best part of the job. Collaboration is one of my greatest strengths. As the oldest of four siblings with a brother who is seventeen years my younger, I have developed strong leadership and teamwork skills through guiding and supporting my family. These experiences have shaped my ability to work well within a team, balancing responsibility and cooperation. Throughout every job I've had, whether it was my first role at Subway, working as a personal support worker, or serving as a volunteer firefighter, I've always found inspiration in being part of the team. Supporting and fostering team growth has consistently been a priority for me and I strive to maintain that sense of collaboration and mutual support in every role and commitment I take on. One thing that I learned from my time as a volunteer firefighter came from my deputy chief, and I believe that it is a great core value. He said something along the lines of, if you learn one thing a day, no matter how small, then you will always make greater strides than those who refuse to learn. If you think that you know everything there is to know, then you are not living to your greatest potential. And this experience has stayed with me, and I believe it is the reason I continue to embrace each learning opportunity, build my confidence in all of my skills and thrive in every role I take on. You may have seen me working at the golf course, the recreation complex, or even at town hall. During my time at the town hall, I gave valuable insights into the operations of the municipality, which only deepened my growing interest in being part of something as rewarding and essential as municipal governments. I'm deeply grateful to the town of Marathon for taking a chance on me, and I always always appreciate the opportunities that they have provided. Knowing many of the current town employees gives me confidence in our potential to be an exceptional team and a great activist for our tight-knit community. I'm sure the big question on everyone's mind is why? Why would you want to be on council? And my answer is simple. If you have the opportunity to improve people's daily lives, build meaningful connections and help create a beautiful, inviting and growth-oriented community, wouldn't you want to be a part of that team? If you are able to make a real difference in the lives of the residents, and I believe that together we can strengthen partnerships and continue enhancing the lives of our residents and visitors alike. I recognize that this would be my first time running for municipal councillor, and I acknowledge that there is a lot to learn. I value this opportunity to interview as it allows me to share who I am and what I stand for. If there were an election, however, I'm confident that I would have run and I will continue to do so in the future. My goal is to be a strong advocate for this community and working hard towards its continued growth and success. I read the corporate strategic plan for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six, and I believe that the current changes the council wants to make will bring in more people, more jobs and volunteer opportunities and more revenue for the town. The core values that the town includes specifically, yeah?
Yeah, Mike, I just thought you were right there.
Yeah.
Just because we're going to ask you some questions that are probably going to pertain to some of those answers.
Okay.
So the first part was just about yourself and
Okay.
you know, that. And I think those key questions we're going to ask you are going to come into your answers.
Okay.
So keep those notes there handy by all means. And then feel free to answer those questions as they come to you. And then at the end, you can highlight something that you didn't get through your notes that we missed, by all means, share with us.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you. And I hate to cut you off, but I just wanted, because you're going to be asked all these questions, so it's going to be like, not fair to you either, right?
That's okay.
Council Lake?
Yeah, you basically have all of our questions answered. So I'll give the first question. It's a, what's your understanding of the role and the responsibility of a councillor for the town of Marathon? And then the second part of that question is what skills, interests and personal qualities do you possess that makes you a good candidate for this?
Sorry, the the first part was?
So the role of a of a councillor and the responsibilities of a councillor for the town of Marathon, and then the skills you have, and then the personality that would fit that.
Definitely being a good leader, being supportive towards your community as well as to your team, being an advocate for your community, as well as the residents and your team alone are very strong skills that you need to have, along with leadership. A strong leader can inspire and guide others, and I believe we have that. But being able to support that leader is definitely important. I am a very empathetic and compassionate person, compassionate person. So I understand the needs and the concerns of the general public and people and am able to level with them, so to say. And I also believe I have a strong commitment to public service. I have always known that I was meant to help people and to be a part of something greater than just myself.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Up next, we have Councilor Meadows, please.
Can you tell us about our community and the challenges we face?
Our community is small but mighty, that's for sure. We have a lot of people here who have grown up here whose families have been here for generations, and that's wonderful to see. It's nice also to see all of the newcomers coming in and being able to support the community. Being here for three years now, I I have a strong connection to the public, working within the town. I feel like I was working right in with the public service sector throughout my time at town hall, even the rec complex and even at Confederation College. And just having the knowledge of the town and what you stand for will definitely help within the community.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Councilor Anthony, please.
All right. My question is, what do you think about what makes Marathon a great place to live, work and play? What comes to your mind?
I really, honestly, the people make the town. I've met a lot of great people here, either working with them or just being able to be out in the community and see them, you know, public skating. I definitely, sorry, I just lost my train of thought. One of the great things is that the beautification of the town has been very apparent. You know, all of the planter boxes at town shows a lot of commitment from our partners within the community. It also helps with the beautification. When I think of the town, actually, the first thing I think of is Pebble Beach. And actually, the beautification of that has been amazing. It made it such an inviting and accessible place for everybody to come and see the amazing views of Lake Superior.
Great. Thanks for that. Councilor Wheeler, please.
My question is, Marathon has some potentially exciting developments in the works. What is your understanding of these developments?
The big one that I know is on everybody's minds is the Active Living Centre. And I believe that the Active Living Centre will provide us with an opportunity to see more recreational areas and activities for families all along the North Shore, as well as any tourists who may come to the community and allow the town to continue to prosper. Being able to partner with the surrounding communities was definitely a great thing to do and being able to collaborate with them gives us a chance to build something for everybody to enjoy. Other focuses on mental health and human services, the roadway management, fire hall modernization, the natural pipeline development and the commercial port of Peninsula Harbor will continue to improve our town and the facility operations within it in a practical and economically sustainable way. And being a part of that is something that I wish to continue to advocate for because I really love where all of those motions and factors are going.
Thank you.
Thanks. Councilor Ball, please.
All right. Cody, what company do you put forward your application at this point?
I have always wanted to be a part of something that was really going to make change for other people. I believe with the right team, with the right support, you're able to do that. And knowing most of the people on this team and already have been a collaborator with them helps me, I feel like, to be a strong supporter within it. And honestly, I really love this town and this town is going to be the place where my family will grow and we will get to experience Marathon firsthand with all of the wonderful changes and the growth that we have to offer. I mean, I've already seen the great lengths the town goes to to create a diversified and inclusive community, which is essential and important. And it's really important in energizing our community.
Awesome. Great. So you want to go back and discuss any part of that you might have thought I missed, my cut off, and it wasn't purposely just so that you didn't want to repeat yourself, but you can do that?
I guess the biggest thing that would be left over would be that I I really do recognize this would be my first time running and that this isn't an election. And having this interview process, I find, is really important to me because I'm able to come up and tell you who I am and show you what I want, as opposed to an election. However, I would have run regardless, as I think that it's something that I've really wanted for a while. I just didn't really know how to work my way into the system. And I believe this kind of gives me a little bit of an in.
Awesome. Do you have any questions of us now as a council that we might have missed or something that you want to know more of?
I guess the I did have a question. The the port, the Peninsula Port, which I think is going to be amazing and provide lots of job opportunities and more input for us. I was just wondering the timeline on that.
So the port is a very exciting project for the municipality. We're working forward on those aspects. And of course, we're partnership of BN and F5050 Partner and administration is working through with their administration on the application process for funding. Once we work through those processes, we will have a public announcement hopefully in the new year, as best we can. And there's some activity that we're working on behind the scenes. So things are rolling out. We'd like to see it yesterday, but that's not reality. So hopefully in twenty twenty-five, we're going to have opportunities with some major announcements around the port. So we're excited about that as well. It's a timeline. And then, of course, there'll be great opportunities with for the municipality and the region once the ports up and around.
Yeah, I I just, I'm really excited for it. I think it's going to be really great for the town and help give us a little bit extra than what we currently have.
Anything else you might have missed or you want to ask?
I I think that's pretty much it, unless you guys have any other questions for me?
No, we we got a straightforward format and we've asked everybody the same amount of questions, you're everybody about the same amount of opportunity to to share with us what they might think about the role of a councillor. We will go through this process. We have two more individuals to speak to and ask the same questions. We'll deliberate after those individuals have done. And we will come up with a decision, share that information with the individual who's successful. We'll make a public announcement on December sixteenth at council. And then the individual starts in the new year of twenty twenty-five.
Perfect. Well, thank you again for giving me this opportunity. It's really important to me and I really want to be a part of something that will make this town even more great than it already is.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Good time.
Thank you.
Okay, so good night.
We might have a little bit of time for the next one, too.
Next one is Jennifer.
I'm kind of glad as part of the audience.
Well, welcome. And the process is simply this. We've had four individuals before you to speak and ask them the same questions. We're going to ask you the same questions. Each member of council is going to have an opportunity to ask you a question. And we'd like to just tell us a little bit about you and yourself to start us off. And then from there, we'll get into the questions as we go forward.
Okay.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, so I just want to say good evening to everyone, to mayor and council members and other towns staff. As most of you know, my name is Jennifer Morgan. I was born and raised here in Marathon. I went away to the University of Western Ontario, got my degree in chemistry. I came back and worked for a year, then I went back to school to become a massage therapist. When I graduated with that, I came back to open up my own business as a registered therapist, started my family. I did that for over twenty years. Around COVID, decided it was time for a bit of a change, did some more schooling for medical transcription. I did, I worked for a bit with Sunnybrook Hospital in Toronto, as well as Vancouver Island Health Authority in B C. Plus, I worked locally here for Nosh for both Marathon and McCausland and Terrace Bay. I still do that now when I have time. And that was all done remotely. And then recently in January of this year, I started on as the office manager with Dylan, who's the new chiropractor in town. So I'm his office manager, do everything except chiropractic. As far as my volunteering and and things like that, I sat as the Chair of the Parent Council at the high school for the time that my kids were in high school. I worked closely with the superintendent or director of education and the principal, obviously. We got, we applied for several different forms of funding. We started up the breakfast program while I was there. I've been part of the judo club. My dad has run it for the last fifty years. And when I was old enough to not just be on the mats, I took over doing most of the organization paperwork stuff. There was a period of about five years where we actually hosted a provincial qualifier here in town. So that involves a lot of coordinating, organizing a lot of different people, different aspects. And then another big thing is I, with a fellow Marathonian, we started a support group several years ago called Reach. And that was a support group for caregivers who are caring for loved ones that have mental illness. And it was just born out of our need. So we just decided that if we needed it, there probably were a lot of others in town that were looking for something similar. So we saw the need and proceeded with that. So I would say that over the course of my professional career, as well as my my volunteering with different organizations, I've become quite skilled at building a rapport with people. I'm pretty open about my experiences, my opinions, and I feel in doing that, it helps other people then to open up in return. I've also, as well with both, both working as a massage therapist, but then through the remote work and with Dylan, it's brought a lot of opportunity to collaborate with with other doctors, specialists. With the remote work, my whole, like, our whole team was spread all over Canada, so we were constantly having to, you know, touch base, making sure we were on the same base. And so I just think all of those things together lend well to a position such as this and comfortable talking to people, maybe not in a big, big setting, but definitely in smaller groups. I I'm pretty comfortable with that. And I think that's about it. I I'd like to commend everyone for doing such a great job and getting Marathon where we are now. And I just would really love the opportunity to be part of that, to bring Marathon forward into the future.
Awesome. Thanks for that. I'm going to go right off to Councilor Lake with this first question.
Yeah, so I'm just going to read the same question that the other you have, and then write notes as you talk. So my question is, what's your understanding of the role and responsibilities of a councillor for the town of Marathon? And then thinking about yourself, what skills, interests and personal qualities do you have that you think would make you a good candidate for that position?
Okay, so roles and responsibilities, I would say definitely the main role is to represent the community and and try to be receptive to ideas and opinions and concerns that people are bringing forward and do the best to work with the other councillors and administration to possibly resolve issues that people have or develop strategies to improve things where that's needed. As far as qualities for myself, again, I I've spent my whole career collaborating with other professionals following, you know, guidelines and things set out by, you know, privacy and confidentiality laws and that kind of thing. And again, I'm quite comfortable. Um, and again, I'm quite comfortable, you know, saying, Ray, what's your opinion about this? And then listening to that feedback. Yeah. And then working to try to come to a resolution or whatever the case presents itself.
Great. Thank you for that. Councillor Meadows, please.
Can you tell us about our community and the challenges we face?
Tell us. I was born here, so there's a lot to tell. Um, I think for me personally, I think right now, one of the biggest challenges that I see is affordable housing. We have four adult children. Three of them are currently living at home because they can't afford to not live at home and pay for school and afford a vehicle that they need to go back and forth to school. The one that's not living with us has no vehicle because he can't afford a vehicle and rent. So I think that's, that's a huge thing. I do think drugs have become quite, quite a concern. I know that directly as council, there's not a lot we can do with that. But I think we can work definitely to support police enforcement and other community members, maybe if they're witnessing something to come forward and it be okay to come forward to try and resolve. I don't know that it'll ever be resolved, but to help maybe control that a bit more.
Pretty. Thank you. Councillor Anthony, please.
What do you think about Marathon? Being a great place to live, work and play? What comes to your mind?
That I find that tricky because again, I lived here my whole life. I've gone away to school. I had lots of opportunity to live other places and I always chosen to come back here and raise my family. My husband and I plan to retire here. I just think that it, it has everything that we need to be content here. It's a good combination of, of outdoor stuff. It has enough resources. I think I'd like to see more eventually, but um, yeah, I just, I feel that it's a safe community and I just am quite comfortable here.
Great. Excuse me, councillor Wither.
My question is Marathon has some potentially exciting developments in the works. What is your understanding of these developments?
Okay. So, so obviously the Active Living Centre, I would say is top of the list. And I think, I think it's a great endeavor. I think a lot of people are really looking forward to it. I have talked to a lot of people at work and just, just hey, what do you know, people see something in the mercury or on the news and they're like, hey, what do you think of that? So we get into a conversation, everybody's missing the everybody's missing the pool. So I, I think that the sooner we can get that up and going, I think the better. Um, I do have some questions about, I'm not asking them here, I'm just. Just maybe why some of the design things were the way they were as opposed to put into something. I, I would rather have seen some of that go to something maybe more functional within the complex. But overall, I think it's, I think it's a great thing for Marathon. I think it's great for Beadegong. I think it's great for Netmasangri. I think it's great for Manitowage, you know, all the outlying areas. I think it's a great opportunity. And I know that, I know it's not PGM anymore, but it keeps changing names. So I can't remember, but the mine, I think, I mean, I think if that gets going, that's another huge addition to hopefully employment, tax base, just community members in general.
Great. Thank you for that. Councillor Balance, please.
Awesome. So what prompted you to post forward your application at this point?
I, I have a lot of strong opinions about things. And I just felt that it was, I'm at a point in my life where I have the time to be able to commit to something like this. And I, I want, again, having talked to people, you know, my whole career, people have questions about things and I want to be able to answer those for them. And just try to, to be as inclusive and, and connected. And this is the way to achieve that, I feel.
Great. So, so thank you for all the answers. And this is our opportunity for you now to ask us any of the questions you just mentioned. But maybe have some questions of us on, and whatever you think is appropriate, then we'll try to answer the best we can from a council's perspective.
Do, do you think it's appropriate to ask?
Whatever you think is an appropriate question, ask of council in regards to the role of councillor or the operation of the play.
Okay.
In that sense, right? Those specifics about wonder.
Okay, okay. Um. You know what? I'm not sure that I actually have too many questions. I think it'll be one of those situations where hopefully I'm lucky enough to get the position. And then it'll be, uh, once you get into it, sort of learn along the way and feel your way around, kind of, is my approach.
Yeah, that's great. If you don't have anything else in regards to that, Jennifer, then council will go through the process. We have one more individual this evening to discuss and ask the same question we just asked of you.
Okay.
We've had six candidates. Obviously you're fully aware of that, I'm sure. We'll go through that and then we'll debate on the, the appropriate individual that will be representative of the next two years of the council.
Okay.
And then we'll notify that individual's success or not. And then we'll go to the public on December the 16th with that individual's name. And then that individual will start on January the 25th, whatever the first meeting of council will be in January.
So will the person be notified before, like,
Yep.
like next week or?
I would, we never asked that, but we would debate today, we'd probably make a decision.
If council makes a decision tonight, then I would like the individual, no, yeah.
Okay, okay. I just didn't know if it's wait.
Publicly it'll be announced to the public around the motion of council and that individual will be elected and that will be on the seat.
Okay.
So if you haven't done the hours, appreciate your time and remember to promote and we'll be leading the meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you and thank you again for your time and for staying late after, after you were done work.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
It's hard to come in.
You doing good?
Yes, sir.
We're not, we're doing good. Thank you. And welcome. And we went through five individuals already tonight to ask them the questions. We're going to ask you the same questions. And it's just a process of being, you know, comfortable and anything goes. And we're going to give you the opportunity to tell us a little bit about yourself. And then we'll go into some questions that each member of council will ask of you through the next half an hour or so.
Sure.
Let's, let's talk about you and what was Jay all about.
Yep. My name is Chai Patel. I moved to this Marathon community before two years. And I started my first job in N W as a supervisor. After that, I got opportunity with the dental clinic as a dental assistant. And then I got, last year I got my opportunity with the town of Marathon. I was working as a seasonal operator. And right now I'm working with Mary Campbell Goldmine as a geology technician. So, and also I have my wife who is living with me here in the town and she is right now studying for nursing practice, sorry, practical nursing. And after six months, she will be ready to be as a nurse. So she will going to be served this community as well.
You good?
Yes, sir.
Right on, man. Okay. So we're going to start right off the questions, councillor Lake, please.
Oh yeah, I get the first question. So it's a, what's your understanding of the role and responsibility of a councillor for the town of Marathon? And then what skills, interests or personal qualities do you have that you think make you a good candidate to do that?
Sure. So basically councillor is a public servant who help people in the town and try to develop more and more things in the town. So if I will get this position for myself, so I have a good communication skill with the people and I like to talk with each and every person, no matter who is. So for that reason, like I can communicate with them and find more and more solace in the problem for the town. Like sometimes if you talk with the people, they will tell you right away, like what's we need to improve and what they're looking for into like in our town. So some days like if I will talk to the person like they agree with suggestions, like we need right now ongoing project is like Active Living Centre. So people most looking for swimming pool. And I heard a lot about, a lot about swimming pools every day mostly like, like we are tired end of the day. Hopefully we will have swimming pool soon. And same thing like if we have swimming pool, yeah, for sure. It will be really good, helpful for our community.
We don't mind as we're just writing as you speak too. So just sort of making notes for the questions. So thanks for that, Ajay. Councillor Meadows, please.
Um, tell us about our community and the challenges we face.
So these communities are owned by like our indigenous people. So like we have three different our reserves, we crave a big motor and the hermit. So if we are growing, we also need to take them with us when we grow, they need to also grow with us. So the main challenge for us right now is like, we have a small community and we need to grow and we need to find more and more solace and for our like jobs and the development as well. Like right now we have very good mine and future. If we go with that, probably the challenge of mine will also coming. So that will bring like more than 400 jobs for our town people. And also like right now, ongoing project is Active Living Centre. So if we have that project, we will make more jobs because I was a part of the team last year. So I know like Daryl, Rick, Sir, and everyone gave me like little presentation about the Active Living Centre and how many jobs we will bring it for through that. And I was a part of the project as well about the port we are bringing by the work like for the Lexupi's side. So that will bring like around more than 400 jobs as well for us, like to get the product from the big cities through the water and also it will make us less cheaper compared to right now we are getting.
Very good. Jay, thank you very much. Councillor Anthony, please.
All right. Jay, my question is, when you think about what makes Marathon a great place to live, work and play? What do you think? What comes to your mind?
So I always come before that Marathon is a land of opportunity. I started my job as a supervisor in restaurant, then I moved to dental clinic, then I moved to town of Marathon. Now I'm working with a mine. So if you want to work, this is the best place to live. Like the community always support people. Like if you go to conference and call it right now, they're supporting my wife for the nursing course, like other, like other women as well there for the nursing program. Same with like mining program. They, they have been doing mining program for a lot, like I think two years, last two years. And it's been like three or four batches they did already. And out of them, like almost everyone would have joined in the mining. Plus recently they did the course for the heavy equipment as well. So I think it's almost done. And when they will be finished that course, they will get a job right at the mine. Because in Duburru, we have mine there. In Merrick, we have, sorry, in Marathon, we have it same, it's the same as the Geraldine. So right now we have three or like three mines that ongoing right now. So it will create good impact for the people who is living with the community as well.
Great. Thanks for that. Councillor Wither, please.
Jay, Marathon has some potentially exciting developments in the works. What is your understanding of these developments?
So the, the, like recently they did the development for the public work garage. So that helped all the equipment stay in the same place. So like instead of missing and putting different places, we will lose equipment, maybe it's still from someone as well. So if we have like a same place, we can like manage the equipment and as well as the people as well who work with us. Same thing like we built a car wash in the garage as well. So it will make like good thing for the vehicles to clean it over there and it will last longer. So that upcoming project is Active Living Centre. It says like $68 million for that. And I saw that on the website. It says like, we are going to do bidding for the companies who are interested. So, and hopefully we will have more project like Ford. And I have idea for the airport as well. So we, we have airport, but we are not using often. So maybe we can ask some bigger companies who can start to do transportation with the airports. It will be easier for us and we can get like, we can get more money. So we can use it for the community.
Awesome. Thank you, Jay.
Great. Thanks, Councillor Balance.
All right, Jay, what prompted you to put forward your application at this point?
So as I mentioned earlier, like this community give me a lot. And this is the right time to help the people who lives here for a longer time. We have senior people and like adult as well, but the kids who is growing up. So they need a better guidance as well. So I have a strong communication skills. I can use that with the kids and also with adults and that can make an impact for us.
Awesome. So that's it for the questions, Jay. And we want to give you an opportunity to ask council any questions you might have of us in regards to the role of a councillor or something that you're not aware of, that's something that needs to be answered, anything. And if you feel you want to ask, if you don't have any, that's great too, but it's up to you. And if there's something you felt that you might have missed in those questions, you can also help us to share that with us as well.
All right. I'm too much nervous. So yeah, usually we wait outside of the place. So that's a different part, but over here like I'm shaking right now. So I don't get like much question, but like the, what is the position? Say it's like, what is the requirement?
Sure. So council typically meets twice a month, once in the summertime in July and August. And then from there, there's might be various boards or positions that you might be asked to sit on through the term of council. Typically, this term is only half of the term because we had the councillor Suki leave. But you know, an election process is four years. And then there's external boards and committees, like I said, that you might be asked to sit on. So that might be a commitment there. And then during New Year, depending on the budget process and the New Year, each year we go through the budget process, might be a couple of days and there were just longer periods of time. But in general, it's about communication, the role more than anything is communication with your fellow council people and your, your CEO. That's the only employee that council has is the CEO. That's what we communicate with. We always communicate through the CEO and then those other discussions there. So it's not, it's not a huge commitment, but it's a commitment. And I think as a councillor, we all experience that, the more of the role of a councillor is how you deal with yourself and the public. That's the key, right? Anything else?
No, all good.
And don't, don't have to be nervous. And we just talked about it before you came in. It is awkward because we, we all, like you said, you could talk to somebody one-on-one somewhere, but you come in the chairs feels like a little bit more formal. How do you be nervous? But it's okay.
Yeah, this is the first time actually for me that I'm doing something totally new.
Right.
I was the speaker in India in my college.
Right.
So I have like that skill coming from there here as well. I'm using that communication skill. So that's a reason like I'm just a little nervous. I didn't before, but like totally new for me now.
For sure. Well, that's a good skill to have. Awesome. So thanks a lot for that. What we'll do is we'll be now, we're here, the last individual that we were going to interview. We'll be discussing the, the six applications we received. Once you have, make a decision. The CEO will reach out in regards to the successful candidate. And then from there, there'll be identified to the public on December the 16th. That individual will be starting the position January of 2025. If the successful candidate is accepting of that position once we go through it.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in and appreciate your, your opportunity to come and assist us.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thanks, Jay. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night.